Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, would you call the roll call? Here? Here? Here?
Here.
Michael DeVito?
Here.
Eric Jones?
Present.
Kristen Renn? Here. Paulie? Present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
No.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Danny?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Renn?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dammert?
Yes.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any matter?
Yes.
Okay. If you would come to the podium and state your name and where you reside, and you have three minutes.
My name's Elizabeth Gannon and I reside in DeKalb. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank Sycamore School Board for taking the time to hear about community thoughts and concerns. My name is Elizabeth Gannon and I'm a Sycamore High School graduate of 2017. I believe I graduated with your daughter. I now work for Safe Passage in DeKalb as a prevention specialist. My goal is to teach children the tools they need to do safe with the lessons we teach. We offer a variety of lessons including state mandated Aaron's Law education, healthy relationships education, digital boundaries lessons, and bystander intervention training. I am not sure if some of you remember me, but my maiden name's Elizabeth Raider. I did very well in school and was incredibly active. I was cheer cabinet and involved in National Honor Society among other school activities. The main reason for all this activity was because I did not feel safe in my abuse of home. I believe that if I had learned the lessons that I now teach with Safe Passage, I would have not only been safer in my home, but I would have had a healthier relationships, known that I have a support network to go to. At Safe Passage, we know that there are far too many kids who go through similar situations. One researcher has estimated conservatively that at least 10 to 20% of children are exposed to intimate partner violence annually, with as many as one third exposed at some point during childhood or adolescence. We also know that one in four girls and one in six boys are sexually abused before they turn 18 years old. These numbers are staggering. More than likely, one in two students in every classroom has experienced some kind of abuse. I would love to come into Sycamore Schools along with my coworkers and work with your students to understand the important lessons around reporting abuse, building healthy relationships, and finding hope and support for each other. We can offer these lessons to all students, as many schools have us do for Aaron's Law and healthy relationships, or we could focus on smaller groups, clubs, individual classroom lessons, and more. I'd love to set up a meeting to talk more about all the services and education we can offer. I have brought my business card with me with my contact information and will have them available to anyone who would like to discuss this topic further. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
You're welcome. My suggestion would be that you give your contact information to Mr. Wilder, our superintendent.
Awesome, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening on any particular issue? If you would come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is April Zenas and I live at 41 East Exchange Street in Sycamore. And I'm actually going to give my time tonight to Liz Lundin.
Thanks, April.
Hello. Hey. This is exciting. Somebody forgot to put this on here. Okay. Got it. So, Wilder, thanks, appreciate it. I'm Liz Lundin, I'm of 822 Summonance Street. Thank you, as always, for your time and your service to the Sycamore School District and to this community. It is not lost on me that you haven't seen my beautiful face since a few months ago, but I have three active, amazing daughters that keep me on the go. So, know that it's not just because now I have another opinion to share. Speaking to that, Mr. Wilder, thank you for your time a few weeks back. It's appreciated. And I encourage all community families, parents, to reach out to this board. Michael DeVito, Eric Jones have been really great in speaking with me on my concerns. So, thank you for that. I considered which data, article, medical journals that were shared in each moment of the past 48, 72 hours of what to cite to you. And I know that you already have done or you're going to do your due diligence in regards to all of the information that's out there, so I'm going to save you that time. I'm here to represent my three daughters and a group of parents and families that believe masks should be optional for all students and staff in this upcoming school year. I'm here to encourage you publicly to decide locally on optional masks. The CDC guidelines do use words like "may" opt to make. The IDPH and ISPE are using words like "should." There are no words of "must" and "shall" on these masks. Masks are currently considered to be EUA products. That is illegal to be mandated for our children and for us as adults. Other items that I want to make sure we are all clear on. The masks do have a negative mental and physical impact on our students. The positivity rate in DeKalb County, I believe at this moment, is less than 2%. The masks are not effective as they are being used currently. They are not sanitary in that on and off process and the reusing cycle that students, some families, some parents are using them. I am terribly concerned about students of segregation and discrimination based on whether or not a student has been vaccinated or not, and based on whether or not they are wearing a mask. I believe, and I know many people in this community believe that our rights as parents to make that decision for our students should be in our hands. We should decide how to care for our children in their medical decisions. Other Illinois districts are making their own mask policy with no mandate dates. I'd like you to take into consideration your own public participation that you've had over the past few months. Have you been going to the gym? Have you gone to church? Have you gone to the grocery store with no masks? Kids are living their best summer ever by not wearing masks. Sorry, getting emotional. But they're having a great time and they're not masked and it's amazing. It's really great. My future plans, as I continue to be an active civil participant in this district, to create a petition to the school board in the district if need be, to continue to research a student health rights form. I'm going to continue to gather and group up civil participants for courteous and respectful dialogue with the district. That's really utmost important to me. I'm going to continue to encourage parents and families in the district to show up and not just when you have a strong opinion, because you probably haven't seen a lot of people. So, anyway, if you hear nothing else, please know that there is a large percentage of families and parents in the community that will support you, the administration, and the board to execute an optional mask policy for this upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? If you would come to the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you very much for getting me up. My name is Diana Holtz. I live at 219 Summonance Street in Sycamore. And just to piggyback on what Lisa said, I don't have all the statistics. I know that you'll do your due diligence and looking that up. There have been no fatalities for school age children in DeKalb County. In all of Sycamore, there's been only a little more than 2,000 cases total. So, we need to ask ourselves, does the data warrant such an overreach of authority on our children? As parents, we are accustomed to working with our kids and teaching our kids how to take precautions for their own personal health and wellbeing. As a parent of a child that has a seizure disorder, as a parent of a child with a variology, I am accustomed to teaching my children to take precautions to guard their own healthcare. It is the parent's right and it's responsibility to guard that healthcare. There has not been enough data to show that the institution of masks in the school district is really a big factor in hospitalizations for children. I don't have that statistics, but it would be something really to look in for DeKalb County. So, then what are we doing with our children then? What is the data that is supporting this overreach of parental authority to teach our children how to safeguard their health and wellbeing? So, again, I would like you guys to take a look at the data and take a look at your own personal experiences. Experiences since adults are all eligible for the vaccinations. Are we making our children then responsible for the health of adults, thinking that if we make the kids masked up, then adults don't have to worry about it? What does that tell our children? I've been in child welfare from various angles. And parentification of children is a big problem. It robs kids of their natural development, their social emotional connections with one another. And I'm just really concerned that we're crossing that line. And what are we doing with our kids with this overreach? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Shaw Marshall. I'm at 540 Fuller Lee Drive and I'm yielding my miss. So, Lisa, you're up.
Hi, I'm Lisa Chirrock. Thank you. I live at 1864 West Forest Drive, Sycamore. Like everyone here this evening, I am just interested in promoting what is in the best interest of our school district's children and staff. And my husband and I strongly believe that wearing masks for children and staff should be strictly a voluntary one and not a mandated one. Like my recent email to all of you, I didn't catch a couple of you because your emails aren't in there, but to you, the board, and to Superintendent Wilder. It's the dangers, harm, and personal injury that mask wearing can cause children. They're real. And by mandating that our children must wear a mask while at school for hours on end, I feel like the district is basically saying the risk of getting COVID-19 is, risk is more powerful than the risk of any other danger that's out there by wearing a mask. And I don't think that should necessarily be your decision to make to dictate to us what risks we are or are not willing to take on our children. A very recent study out of Britain, this is like last couple days, I'll email to all of you so we have it, found that a child under the age of 18 has literally, and they use the numbers that came from at the height of the pandemic. A child under 18 has a 1 in 2 million chance of dying of COVID. And if you put that in reference, all of us have a 1 in 500,000 chance of being struck by lightning. We all have a 1 in 200,000 chance of dying in a plane crash. A person has a 1 in 1,000 chance of drowning. A person has a 1 in 100 chance of getting killed in a car accident. But if you have, a child has a 1 in 2 million chance of dying of COVID. I think that's kind of helps put things in perspective. Just for your science dates out there, Eric. A single virion of SARS-CoV-2 is a tenth of a micron. There are literally 1,000 microns in a single millimeter. A millimeter contains 1,000 microns. A single virion of SARS-CoV-2 is not even one micron. It's one tenth of a micron. And so, it's important to realize the tininess of these particles, because it really does bring into a question of the efficacy of cloth and/or surgical masks. Dr. Burnin, who is a professor of global health, and I'll send you these studies, in a randomized trial compared cloth masks to surgical masks. Long story short, I'm going to cut right to the chase. He found that in cloth masks, the particle's penetration was 97%. 97% of particles went right through them. And they're talking about 100 microns. Think about that, 100 microns go right through the mask and that's the size of them. Not one tenth of a micron. That is, if you think about these masks, there's openings everywhere. I mean, air will come in, path of least resistance. They're coming in all angles. So, a tenth of a micron in cloth masks, it's useless. I'm going to skip this part here for now. Like I mentioned to you before in the email, that masks themselves contain lots of germs on them. I teach music in a different school district. And I've seen children come in my classroom, they take their masks off, they put them on, they drop them on the floor, they're talking to people, they're touching things, they're touching instruments, they put them back on, they're touching the inside of the mask, the outside of the mask. They're wearing the same mask they wore three days ago, three days in a row. And I think to myself, what are you breathing in? And there are studies now that show the pathogens on these masks and some of the problems that these masks have created by doctors from Yale, Harvard, Baylor. There's, children had difficulty with breathing because of these masks. Repeated inhalation of bacteria or mold buildup in the mask. Anxiety and sleep problems, inhalation of toxic substances such as microplastics and chlorine compounds located in the mask. Carbon dioxide intoxication, sudden cardiac arrest, reduction in blood oxygenation, psychological damage, dizziness, lightheadedness, headaches, anxiety, sleep problems, et cetera. All these things from the mask potential. And yet, wear the mask because there's a 1 in 2 million chance they could die of COVID. And that's a hard thing as a parent to say that risk outweighs all the other risks for me personally. Just a couple of quick stories and I'll begin. My children are very involved in sports. We've been at basketball all summer long. I'll just say 12 different states easily by now that we've traveled to this summer. Going in and out of gyms, crowds of people this weekend, over 500 teams from all over the nation at Chicago for the tournament of champions. Thousands of people, one of the escalator, you could count on one hand how many people in the crowd where you were in were wearing a mask. None of the players, none of the parents, fans, hardly anybody was wearing a mask. It's this breathing fresh air, having that inhalation, exhaling properly is super important. And it's not just the health as far as the physical health, it's the mental health that masks do for us. When the pandemic first started, Eric knows this a little bit, it caused enormous anxiety, enormous, to the point where I wasn't letting my children go to friends' homes, to the store, I mean, it was. And then we got a phone call from Faith's coach out at Ames. And he said, hey, bring her to Ames, we're open out here. I know Illinois is probably going to be locked down all summer. Now, this was last year. And I was looking at Steve like, you can't do that, because it just, I had so much fear. And he's like, life is meant to be lived. So, long story short, we said yes. I took her out to Ames. And the first time in like months, I was seeing people walking in and out of Hy-Vee without a mask on. And I was seeing people coming in and out of Target without a mask on. Hardly anybody was wearing masks. And I realized how the masks had created all this fear and anxiety.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to consider that place. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hi, everyone. My name is Joy Carlson. I live on 1823 Douglas Point. I am a lifelong resident and then Face is here. I've seen out the community. I love Sycamore, I love the community. And I'm hoping we can make some good changes here. I am a firm believer that face masks should be optional for the upcoming school year for many reasons. I would like to share some information briefly, piggybacking on what Lisa said. From the CDC.gov website itself, it talks about what the difference is between the surgical masks and the N95 respirators and other respirators, which aren't an option yet. But they discuss the filtration of the surgical masks, same thing that Lisa said. The CDC says it does not provide the wear with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller airborne particles. Again, I don't have to repeat the same information that Lisa said, but we all know the small airborne particles, COVID-19 is .125 microns. The N95 masks only filter .3 microns. And that's not even as good as, or that's even better than the surgical or homemade masks. The second reason I believe masks should be optional is looking at the Norberg Code of 1947. A few key points of the Norberg Code are that the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential, voluntary consent. A mandate would take that consent away from our kids and the parents. As it states, it also states that any experiment, which is what these masks are, should be conducted as will with all unnecessary physical and mentally suffering and injury. The degree of risk to be taken should never exceed the importance of the problem. Again, piggybacking on Lisa, we know the degree of challenges to our children is greater than the risk of having COVID-19. The Norberg Code also states that the human subject should be at liberty to bring the experiment to an end. A mask mandate would not allow them to make that choice for themselves. Just today, I'm sure many of you have heard, the school district of Oswego made an amazing statement on masks. They suggested wearing a mask if you aren't vaccinated. But they also stated they would not require proof of vaccination. It would be great if you would consider this option. On a personal level, my son and I moved out of this state last school year. He attended a person, he attended in-person school on a hybrid basis until February. Beginning February, he went to school five full days a week, all day. No issues in the state and the city that we were in. The last three weeks of school, he did not wear a mask. The governor of Iowa passed a law that masks could not be mandated. She put the needs of the children first, and I am asking you to do the same by making the masks optional. Thanks so much for your time.
Anyone else?
Jeff Fisher, 1 on 6, 1 on 2 on Sycamore. Basically, just wanted to commend every single person sitting here. Fantastic information. It's common sense information. It's something that I think the school board needs to take into account. I think the school board needs to act on common sense, not just what somebody on the stage is telling them what to do. And I think for our students, everything that they said tonight is relevant. Now, we truly have done 100%. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If you want some statistics and facts, I have some right over here.
Hi, everyone. I wasn't going to talk, but my name's Lisa Chow. I live at 1156 Sycamore. Oh, my gosh, that's my address. 1156 Three and Circle, here in Sycamore. I too want to commend everybody for everything that they said, the statistics and everything. I think it speaks for themselves. By the way, having this camera behind you is so flattering. Many parents that watch that on repeat, or families that do. Like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking, so I apologize for the disorganization, but thank you for all of the facts and data and whatnot that's out there. I think the reality of this is, like, you guys are, you guys are in a good position now. I love it that now things are not, that it's not mandated. And now you guys, you know, like, fully are listening to us as a community. And yes, we're going to have some people saying one thing and some saying another. We know we have some that want it, some that don't. But all need to be listened to and all need to highly be taken into consideration. So, I just wanted to add my voice into that of how important, I believe, fresh air is. We spent the entire summer, we travel, we go on long road trips. We only had to wear a mask in one single place, one place out of like, it was probably like 12 states that we were in. We spent numerous weekends in a neighboring state and we never wear masks. We were just at Adventureland, this giant whatever, this park in Iowa yesterday, and not a single person was, you know, it's just that freedom. And now to think about my kids possibly having to do it, I just really ask that you make it optional. Let us as parents choose what's best. I'm not going to send my kids to school sick. If they're surrounded by something, they're not going to go to school. I think we've all kind of learned that. On top of the optional mask thing, I also ask that you, thinking about segregation, just like how things are going to go this year of, like, if the kids aren't vaccinated, can we not use that as an incentive to get vaccinated, like, as far as they won't have to do the extra two weeks and things like that? I just, you know, for anybody to know who has been vaccinated and who hasn't, I just, it's not for everybody else to know, you know. It doesn't matter to me if you have or not, I'm not going to treat you any differently. But the reality is, there are people that will and that will be fearful of other students, you know, and teachers too. That's the reality. So, just a couple of things I also asked, I did that to make consideration. So, again, thanks for your time. And thanks to all the parents with the data.
Anyone else? Not seeing anybody, so, okay. All right, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters. It's the summertime. Didn't have a whole lot, so, it's good. FOIA requests. It's the summertime, we didn't have any FOIA requests. Committee reports.
SEF had a special meeting, so we did approve to work with the district on two programs that are going to be going back to school. I'm sure Mr. Wilder can expand on that a little bit, but I believe the city is partnering on part of that as well. So, we'll be kind of funding that and getting some benefit for the exposure for the education foundation as well. And then Planning and Zoning did meet last night and go over the new HOP plan. And this is the 2014 version, but this has all the markups on it that will be presented to the council on Monday night and will be updated after that. So, they've done surveys for quite some time and they've been working on it for a while. There's no major changes. They're filling in areas that have been annexed that haven't been updated since 2014. There were no big surprises. Everybody wants to preserve the downtown. They don't think we need any more parking. They want to make sure that the entry areas into downtown from different directions continue to be pleasant and welcoming. Probably the biggest comments were on transportation and how we're going to handle transportation, whether it's walking, bike paths, or vehicular traffic through town. So, again, nothing earth shattering or anything, but every seven years or so, we update this. So, it'll be, I think, approved at Monday night's board meeting on first reading. Probably do a second, so they have some time for additional feedback and then they'll publish it.
Be interesting to see how they come out. There's, just from looking at the map that you brought in, it looks like there's plenty of room for expansion to the city, mostly residential expansion, it looks like.
Correct.
And hopefully, we'll continue to move at a pace that's reasonable, where we have growth, but reasonable growth.
Reasonable growth, yeah.
That gives us an opportunity to respond to it.
They did say that, they did say that right now housing permits are basically right back to where they were in 2019, so that little blip of whatever year that was in between then and now, we'll just forget about that one. And it's slow, steady growth, healthy growth. And the other thing to talk about was Airport Road and Plank Road on the transportation side and how those most likely will happen. The current plan shows Airport Road going north and then coming in right by North Grove School, which would not make any sense on a curve by an elementary school. So, that'll likely go the other way to the east and curve up and hit Lindgren Road at some point and potentially Plank Road whenever they do that extension. But as Nathan from the county said, we're 15 or 20 years away from that. But down that road, Plank will become a four lane road at some point. This is probably a long ways off, but eventually, it's going to be a four lane road.
That'll be interesting.
Mrs. Drowning, we'll be on there in a minute.
I did just want to comment a little bit on the two events. It was a great conversation with the SEF board. And I didn't prepare anything formal tonight, because it's still kind of in the works. But the two events were the Back to School Bash. So, first of all, it was kind of serendipity, the way that things fell together. So, we had been planning a Back to School Bash, where we'd have events here at the high school, potentially showing a movie and just kind of a way to create some excitement, you know, for the coming school year. It had also been planning that and putting things together. And then all, once we got in touch from the city who said, hey, we'd like to do a Back to School Bash and kind of offer the downtown area. So, once we got in touch and talked about our plans, it really made sense, especially with construction going on. Let's move this downtown, let's partner with the city. They really just want to help us make the space available, but we'll bring in food trucks, games, things like that. We'll find a way to show a movie, whether that's on the side of a building or, I heard there's a new movie theater that's real downtown. But anyway, just a great event and a great opportunity to partner with the city and then get the foundation involved was just pretty incredible. So, it's going to come together fast. I forget the date for that, but it's early August.
Yeah, it's early August, yeah.
So...
Like, three weeks.
The 11th, so, it'll come fast. So, watch for... So watch for, you know, some marking material on that, but I think that's gonna be a great event. Same with the district is probably not quite as exciting, because people get to hear me talk about the state of the district, but we're really trying to make that an event where, an in-person event, where people have the opportunity to come and listen to a presentation, but then interact a little bit. My understanding is that has been done at some point in the past, and maybe kind of resurrecting that a little bit, but it's something I would like to make an annual event, but the foundation is gonna partner with that, with us on that as well. We'll really be responsible for putting the event together, you know, the presentation, but the foundation is, is gonna look for some sponsorship opportunities and maybe a little bit of fundraising. But the real goal for that event especially is just the exposure. You know, the foundation partnering with the school district on an event like that. So you'll hear more about that, that's a little bit later, August 20th, if I remember correctly, after the beginning of the school year, so, but coming up really fast, too. So to look forward to some more information about those.
So thanks to the city and to the foundation. Any other committee reports? Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for Business Services report.
Thanks, Jan. Tonight, I know I shared some background with you guys with last week, but just to give the board an update, bring you guys up to speed. So we're doing a lot of construction, which is awesome. The rain's been kind of a pass for some things, but we're moving along good. We're working on some paving projects right now. With that, we always know we find some surprises once we start digging things up. So tonight, I'm coming to the board to ask for a resolution for a work change order. So whenever we have a change order, that's over the 10% threshold of the total of the projects, I have to come to you guys and ask to move forward with that. So I'm gonna call the expert up here, Chris from Shales McNamara, district manager. I had him come up and kind of walk through the scenario here at Southeast and West Elementary. Chris, I'll turn over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So today, we have opened up and removed the existing asphalt at West Elementary School Playground and West Elementary School Parking Lot, and also the Southeast Elementary School Playground. So after we remove the asphalt in those two, those three areas for those two schools, we still have to remove the asphalt over at North Elementary. We have not done that to date as of yet. So after we remove the asphalt, SMC Construction, Abby Paving, and Rubino Engineering perform proof rolls on these areas of the stone subbase after the asphalt has been removed to check the structural integrity of the stone subbase before we place new asphalt over it. When we did those proof rolls, over at West Elementary, at the playground, the playground failed completely, the whole playground. So the whole playground is gonna need an undercut. At West Elementary, in the parking lot, approximately three-thirds of it was failed. There's some pictures up on the screen of the West Elementary Parking Lot right there. You can see after the curb went in, you can even see some of the rutting from the, from the trucks in that stone base. So Rubino Engineering has, has recommended doing an undercut in these areas. Kind of have a breakdown here of the anticipated costs. Southeast Elementary School, at the playground, it's approximately half of the playground there, we're right around $42,000, just a bit under. West Elementary School Playground and the parking lot, we are at approximately $75,000. Over at Southeast Parking Lot, as we're having discussions regarding the proof roll, and Mike Renner from Erickson Engineering had come out, and we had some discussions about, and Mark, extra from the school district, about the use of the parking lot. And apparently, it's been discovered that the garbage truck drives through the parking lot, and that parking lot is not currently built or designed to be a heavy-duty asphalt section. So included in that $75,000 cost is a section of the, of that parking lot in a U shape where the garbage truck would travel, changing that section to a heavy-duty asphalt section. So that's part of that $75,000 anticipated cost. North Elementary, we have not opened that up as of yet, but with what we've seen to date so far, we're not very confident that that's gonna all pass a proof roll. So I kind of threw a number in here, a 60% bad area, and when we do that calculation at that same undercut, we're looking at approximately an $86,000, almost $87,000 undercut potential there. Obviously, all these numbers are gonna be tracked, and they're all gonna be based off the unit costs. So we're gonna do all those calculations as we're doing these undercuts, and, you know, some end up a little bit smaller, because we get a bunch of sun and dry days, maybe some of these areas do tighten up a little bit and get a little better. That is a possibility. Doesn't very often happen, but that kind of grand total, or potential grand total with the 60% of North included, we're right around $204,000 in additional costs. Kind of gives you some background on how we got to this point. I'm not sure if you have any questions or things we can expand on.
Are these, are these lots compacted before you do the proof roll?
They are, they did it before they removed, they removed the asphalt and then we proved them, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, what, did you bring in a steamroller first, before you did the proof roll?
No, we did not, we did not roll them before we did that proof roll.
Wouldn't that change the results of the proof roll?
It could potentially, but there's so much moisture in that ground that it was really, it was pumping quite a bit. So it was, it was moving so much that it's not the stone, it's the dirt below the stone that's, that's wet.
Well, I guess I can understand, you know, the need maybe to reinforce a parking lot, but, but playgrounds as well? I mean, there's not a lot of activity that goes on there, there's not a lot of heavy weight on top of that.
No.
Do you have any real big problems with those?
There were buildup of asphalt over the years in those playgrounds, and I think they were approximately six, seven inches deep in a lot of areas.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven at, eleven at West Playground.
At West. So what we did at Southeast, we actually dug up the corner, on one corner, and we checked the stone subbase there before we removed all the asphalt. Then on the other side, we peeled the top layer off, because we're separating, we were able to pull the top layer off. And all the amounts of cracks that we had through these areas, they actually went through all of the layers. So the recommendation was that we should remove all the asphalt and not try to just do a, an extra, you know, mill it and then resurface it, because those cracks will come right back through within a couple of years.
You wanna talk about, uh, Ellen?
Yeah, so with every project, the, the bidders bid a certain contingency amount. For this project, we didn't anticipate it obviously being that large of an amount, but we have an overall contingency for our $7 million that we're doing in projects this summer. So we have about $700,000 in contingency to use. So this money will be coming out of that big pot of contingency, but again, because we're going over that certain amount, just for transparency purposes, we wanted to bring it to the board and have you guys vote on it, just so you are up to date and know what's going on. So you do have the money to pay for it, it's not like this is new money, but I just, yeah, wanted to touch on that also.
So the money's in the contract, it's just a certain percentage. Bigger.
Yeah, and I did reach out to Steve, because obviously, he is our resident expert here. Because I was honestly, you know, I was a little caught off guard with, with the dollar amount. And so, I mean, we spoke with Chris, we spoke with our architects, our civil engineer. Mark's been wonderful, going back and forth, working with them, and I just felt like talking with Steve, I think that made me feel better also. So I think this is something we need to do, we need to do it right. And so I think it's, we'll be on well spent.
Just, I haven't done a paving project where we didn't have some undercuts somewhere. This is just a lot more than you would have thought.
That's right. Percentage wise of the overall paving area, it's a pretty large percentage, more than typical.
Just a quick question, could the garbage truck be rerouted so we didn't need to, or don't need to do a substantial, the base at that driveway, I mean, just cut back on some of that $75,000?
We talked about it.
There's no, where that place is, it will back up onto the concrete by the steps, and then we'll have to take all the concrete by the steps out. So at Southeast, where we used to have it there, it took out all the concrete around one side, we had to put another path in, but where West sits at, it's at the end of a dead-end street. It's the only way in and out of that street there, and way all the cars parked, there's no other way for us to get that truck to go around. We talked about that, the moving the whole dumpsters back, but it still doesn't give enough room for it to do its turn without hitting other concrete around them. We would have to remove that in a few years, because you see, the weight of a con, the weight of a waste management truck does a lot of damage in coming in. So we've already put concrete in the front part of the west where they went through the asphalt that they put in there about 12 years ago, because they started sinking in. Same thing at Southeast, they started sinking into the asphalt that when they put in the new additions to us there, started sinking in, so we had to put a concrete pad to be able to handle that dump truck coming in three times a week.
My only other question was, it might be for my, instead of the heavy-duty asphalt, are we, just based on the fact that material prices are all over the board and inflated right now, the cost of just replacing it with some concrete instead of the heavy-duty asphalt, what the offset was? Because sometimes they're closer than you think. I don't know if they are right now, but...
Yeah, we haven't pursued that option. It is an option that we kind of have on the table, this is just kind of all came about late last week, so it's really been kind of quick to this point.
Because at least the concrete, you know, it, because it's got to turn and back in, right? So even, even with the heavy-duty asphalt, eventually, that's gonna want to tear the asphalt, it's just normal.
Right.
So I was just thinking that at least in that, where they do the turnaround, it might be worth the extra money for the concrete, what it's worth. Just like, just like a bus turnaround, when you get those buses cranking on that asphalt, it's just really stressful.
Yeah, we've also added some curbing in the project, as part of the original project, we're on the perimeter there, so it helps hold that asphalt in also.
I don't know if you wanted me to answer that, but we, Mike Renner with Erickson Engineering. Chris did really a job of explaining everything, but we did, we had three different alternatives to price. One was concrete section, which we would normally do when you have very heavy vehicles, especially making turns, buses, bus turns, garbage trucks, you know, heavy-duty delivery vehicles, pretty common at K-12 sites. Concrete, we actually considered doing a heavier asphalt section, even though it's not concrete and it's still anywhere, we considered deepening the binder section really deep and providing a surface course. Because what that would do over the years, yes, you might get some grinding of the asphalt surface, but then that can be removed and applied to the surface, the binder still remains intact. And then the third option was a geotechnical structure grid, where we could place a geo grid below the existing stone, try to minimize the haul off, because the cost in the undercut is the cut, the removal from the site, the bringing back into the stone, yeah, it's, it's all very costly. So we've kind of given all three options to price. But also remember that, you know, we're, we're an entire team here. We have a geotechnical engineer that did the report, we actually prepared the report before anything was ever done, so that's consultant number one. Then you have myself, Erickson Engineering, we put together the drawings based on the recommendations from ECS. Then we have the contractor, we have the GC, then we have the subcontract, the paving contractor, we have the other geotechnical testing firm that's out there testing everything as the work is being done. So there's a number of people that are actually assembled and trying to figure out, calculate, how do we get you the best widget for the dollar? But yeah, we consider all three options.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? No? Other? Okay. Nice.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing emergency change order for parking lot repairs with Abby Paving?
I'll make them.
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Go call.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Shadler?
Yes.
David, can you stand back?
Yes. Superintendent's report.
Colton, it'd be the clicker back, so I guess I'm still in charge, so. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. A lot on the docket tonight. First in the superintendent's report is gonna be the technology presentation, so I'm gonna talk a little bit, but while I'm doing that, if Roxanne, you and I come up and get ready, you're welcome to do that. Just wanna review, a couple of slides. Before we get started, first of all, our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision, providing an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Our core values, honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, equality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. And professional learning communities ask themselves five questions and then have discussion about that. And those five questions are, what do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How will we know if they've learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? Kind of guides, you know, a lot of the work that we do within the school district, and oftentimes, we talk about the 30,000-foot view, so those things kind of guide us at that level. And I'm gonna turn things over to Roxanne, who's gonna talk about what happens in the classroom across all the schools in the district.
Good evening. Roxanne Horton, Director of Instructional Technology, and I'm here this evening to talk about our technology program. We're going to start out talking about the 2020, 2021 school year in review, a Chrome Book update, SOPA or SAPA, and then end with the 2021, 2022 school year. So 2020, 2021 in review. It's much easier for me to stand up here after the fact to talk about last school year. There were many times where I had a lot of anxiety last year, a lot of things going on. It was kind of a tough school year in the technology department, and of course, I know it was tough for, for everybody, but now that it's over, it's so much easier to look back and to realize how much technology grew over the last school year and a lot of benefits that the COVID year actually provided to us. So the first thing I want to talk about is professional development. There were so many different professional development opportunities. Staff members stepped up and actually created the needed professional development opportunities due to necessity. The teachers invested a lot of time in those professional development activities, and they weren't just internal activities either. Teachers also took to the internet, software tutorials, and online conferences to further their learning. I personally attended the IDEA, the Illinois Digital Educators Alliance Conference this past year, which combined with the Texas counterparts, and I was able to attend live sessions the first week of February and the last week of February, but they also had all of those sessions available for on-demand learning. So it wasn't just, you know, you go to the conference, you go home, you're done. I was actually able to look at all these sessions from the comfort of my own couch on the night, on nights and weekends. I did miss all the people and all the connections that you would make that way, but the commute was so much nicer. There was a lot of student and staff growth last year. It was kind of baptism by fire for students and for staff. Both groups learned a lot about teaching and learning in a way that they hadn't before. I'm proud of the strides that our students and teachers made this year. It wasn't necessarily the way that all students would want to learn, nor the way that all teachers would want to teach, but in the end, they made huge strides and they excelled. My daughter is actually, was actually the remote teacher for a group of preschool students ages three to five, so I had a front row seat on how things were going prior to last year. I don't think anyone would have envisioned a group of 18 preschoolers ages three to five actually remotely learning via electronic device, electronic device for two hours a day, but in the end, even though students excelled and could mute and unmute, I think the best of them. So I just have to say, the picture that is up there is actually one of my daughter's preschool students, and you also see the incidental learner there in the corner. Great story. This parent actually provided, or put a video on Facebook of that little girl, and she was sound asleep in somebody's arms, and all of a sudden, the goodbye song came on, and she hopped up out of a deep sleep, jumped down and ran over to the computer, and the mother said that this is what happens quite frequently. If she happens to fall asleep during the class session, she would wake up when that goodbye song came, and she would jump down and run over to the iPad. Some cute stories that came out of it. Some cute stories that came out of it. Of our devices, as you know, there were some slight problems last year with getting our devices in a timely manner. And so thankfully, our parents worked with us. So it was great to have that community where parents were also willing to help us out. And we were able to then spread the devices we had due to their helping us with using their devices at home. So I appreciate those families who did that. And as you know, then our middle school Chromebooks did finally arrive in January after being ordered May 8th, so a little bit of a lag there. And then our K-1 Chromebooks arrived the end of March. Hotspots. 10 hotspots were purchased for those who didn't have adequate internet access for remote learning. We quickly realized that that wasn't going to be enough. So we ordered 30 more. We quickly realized that wasn't going to be enough. And then we added 20 more, which brought us up to 60 hotspots. All 60 of those hotspots were out, but that did seem to be enough hotspots then to help our families all have an adequate internet access. Our classroom setups. When it came time for parallel teaching, we looked at the teacher need and we came up with a few different classroom options for the teachers. Those included more monitors, including larger ones. Desktop computers were moved from the labs to seamlessly run the setup. External webcams were purchased to provide a better picture of the entire teaching space. And furniture was moved from other locations to complete the setup. On the network side, we converted over aging blades, which those are used to run our virtual server environment and storage to newer, smaller, cooler running hardware. So the past school year was definitely an interesting one and not one that I would like to repeat. I do want to give a big shout out to all of the members of the technology department. It was a long haul, but working together, we were able to accomplish what was necessary for the students and the staff. The skills and equipment acquired during the last year will provide so many more opportunities for our students well into the future. Okay, moving on to our Chromebook update. When you think about Chromebooks, not everybody understands the fact that there is an auto update expiration, or AUE, policy on the Chromebooks. So Chromebooks receive automatic updates that enhance both the device and the software. Device updates provide the latest features and keep the device secure. These updates depend on many device-specific, non-Google hardware and software providers that work with Google to provide the highest level of security and stability support. For this reason, older Chrome devices cannot receive updates indefinitely to enable new operating system and browser features. Last year, I have to say, was probably one of the biggest years for update features due to the remote learning, including two of them that were rolled out were the breakout rooms and the ability to mute all students at once. I'm sure you can understand why that was a great feature for teachers. It's important to know that these dates are necessary to look at when we're deciding to purchase devices. For example, last year, when everyone was desperate, and of course, we were desperate because we were waiting so long for our devices, there were devices that were being sold for $100 more than what we were going to be purchasing ours for. But those machines were going to expire in June of 2022. So that would have given us a year and a half of basically life on those machines. So that's one thing that not only school districts should think about, but even parents would want to think about as they're purchasing Chromebooks. Make sure that you look at that auto update expiration. And the interesting thing is that those come from Google themselves. They're the ones who decide what that is based on the machine, basically what is on the machine to come up with that date. And it's kind of interesting the way it goes because sometimes the same date stays for, as you'll see here in a moment, for multiple years. Okay, so since we do use that for end of life, I do kind of want to talk about the end of life of our Chromebooks that we currently have. So the Lenovo N21, the end of life is September 2021. So that's coming up here in a couple of months. We have already pulled those machines and put them into a central location. So we're ready to, to bring them out of service. We have about 100. Those were our first machines that we got in the district. And those came from Central Education Foundation. The N22s and N23s, I kind of thought, okay, 21 is going out in 21, 22 is going out in 22. And then I found out 23 was going out in 22. And I said, ah, something doesn't compute there. So our N22s and N23s are going to be going out basically next summer. We do have a larger amount of these. We have about 900 of them that are in use in the district and are now in the elementary buildings. We originally had around 1,000 of them. Unfortunately, COVID also hit us hard there because of the way that they were, they were looking for. The way that the camera setup on the machine, you can turn it and it tended to snap off the cables and break the cameras. And we basically can't get those parts right now. So a lot of those are being used as parts for other N22s and 23s. Our Lenovo 100Bs are going out June 2024. We have around 300 of those devices. And those are currently housed at the elementary buildings. Our HP 118G6s, those were the high school ones we purchased two years ago. Our Lenovo 100Bs, those are the ones that we purchased last year for the middle school. And our Lenovo 300E touchscreens, those are the ones we bought for the K-1 last year. Are all end of life in June of 2026. That's over 2,800 devices. The HP 118G9, which are the ones we're purchasing, we purchased for sixth grade this year, will actually be good now until June of 2029. So once again, this is another thing of, you know, looking at our dates and what date they're expiring. I may not be here, but I didn't want you guys cursing my name in 2026. You probably are already with the 2,800. But the ones that I purchased this year, because of the lifetime for Lenovo and HP, my vendor was actually pushing me towards a machine that was going to expire in June 2026. And I said, no, I really don't want to do that. I found this machine, let's go with that. And they said, we will not guarantee that that machine is going to get there before the start of school. And I went, oh no, I'm doing this again. But I said, I'm willing to take this gamble because I really don't believe in having the 325 more machines going out in June 2026. Good news, they arrived on Friday. So they are in the district. So I'm excited about that. That's one less thing waiting on me for the school year. Okay, so I'm talking about a refresh plan. Of course, technology changes all the time. So, I mean, I really don't know what technology is going to look like in 2026 or 2029 when some of these are going out. But as I'm considering a refresh plan, I kind of have to look at where we are right now and kind of continue on with it and how are we going to have the ability to do so? So through June of 2025, all of our senior devices, as they were this year, will be pushed down to our elementary buildings. The sixth graders will then get new devices. Our current seventh graders, so this year's seventh graders, will get new ones when they're in 10th grade. So if you do the years and figure it out, theirs will basically go through 10th grade. Now you might say, let's kind of facilitate that they're going to use it for 10, 11, and 12, only three years. Well, then what happens is then those get pushed back down to the elementary buildings. So we're not getting the elementary building, you know, machines that will only last for, for one year. In this plan note, we will have to supplement the elementary schools every so often. So for an example, that next year, we're going to be losing 900 machines to be end of life. They're going to get around 100 more from our seniors this year that are still going to have life in them. And then we're going to get probably another 250 or 300 from the seniors that will then be pushed down to the elementary buildings. So that still leaves about 550 machines that would have to be purchased to supplement. Now keep in mind, we'll always evaluate and make sure that the need is still there. And as I said, technology will change. Okay, my next slide. Talking about the Student Online Personal Protection Act, or SOPA, or you say SAPA, tomato, tomato. Some people in this room will not even understand what that reference is. Aging myself. Okay, so I want to start out with an overview. So real quick on my overview.
Probably use this, but I'm going to use the mouse.
Use your own computer.
Yeah.
It's nice to have the superintendent working for me tonight. Give him a nice tip afterwards.
Other duties is assigned, right?
Okay, so this is the SOPA applying for our district. At the top, it actually says that it's pronounced SAPA. I want to say that even our attorney group is divided on this. If we go SOPA or SAPA, Ed had kind of a good thought. He was saying, well, we're trying to keep things clean. So SOPA really makes more sense. And for some reason, SOPA sounds better to me. So basically, SOPA became effective on July 1st, 2021. It guarantees that student data is protected when collected by educational technology companies and that the data is used for beneficial educational purposes only, not marketing or selling student information. So for schools, that means that all public schools are required to have signed agreements with vendors or providers that collect student data. And it doesn't matter if it's a free program or if it's a paid program, we have to have that data privacy agreement. Also, all public schools are required to implement and maintain reasonable security practices. So the district requirements, the first thing we were required to do is we were to determine which school employees had the authority to enter into written contracts with third-party operators. Recommended that at least one employee oversee the district's compliance with SOPA's requirements. I drew the short straw. So it's me. We also have some requirements that have to go onto our website. So we have been working on that. The implications this has for teachers is that teachers can no longer use third-party apps, software, or websites that collect student data without the approval of the district. So it's not really that it's the approval of the district, but it's that we have to jump through all these hoops before they're allowed to use it. I'm sorry to say that there actually are some companies out there who are refusing to sign DPA. So at this point, we have to pretty much say, sorry, but we can't use that piece of software. I did notice today, though, that one of them that had said that, no, they will not sign, was on the list today. I didn't get a chance to go in and look at the DPA, but it looks like they may have done reverse. They may have reversed because I think they decided that it was going to be necessary. Okay, so basically, we're looking at programs that have personal identifiable information, or PII. So just as much, just as little as somebody's name is considered personally identifiable information. So any program that quotes a name, we have to get a DPA. So if you move back to the slides, please, and then go to the website. So David is helping me with my compliance on the website. So that we are in compliance. If you scroll down, let's go all the way down to the link for, there it is. View our privacy agreement database. So we are a consortia, which does help us with this giant task. Currently, I believe there's 94 programs that we have on here. So as you see, we have 8 to 18 is one that has been approved. Under the software name, we do have a purpose. So the purpose of that particular program, and I'm sure that Chauncey's happy to see that 8 to 18 is on there now. And then you see under the agreement, there's actually our agreement and the exhibit E. So you'll see if you, we're not going to go into the agreement, but if you want to enter the agreement, you'll see that that's a HERB agreement. But then the exhibit E is R. So some companies, because they didn't want to hear from every single district in Illinois, decided that they would sign the exhibit E, which then allows another school to piggyback onto that agreement. And then if you can scroll over a little bit, please, Steve. I have a missing part on the, can you get there?
As far as I can go right now.
Okay. At the very end, there's a magnifying glass. And that magnifying glass, if you hover over it, it basically tells what information that company is collecting. That's the personally identifiable information. Okay, back to the presentation, please. Now you can sit down if you'd like.
All right.
So for the, basically, any new programs that, you know, right now, this is the push that's really difficult because I had to take all the programs that teachers gave me and I'm going out and trying to get all these DPAs now, all these district privacy agreements now. Later on, once we get all that completed, then let's say a teacher finds a new program. I'm only doing one at that time. So it won't be quite as big a task as it is right now. Okay, so 2021-2022 school year. Hey, for the upcoming school year, for staff, I'm excited to say that we are trying to hire a couple more elementary technology specialists so that we'll kind of be back where we were many years ago, where we'll have one for each elementary school. Those specialists are the ones who teach the specials. So every child in Sycamore is doing the 40-minute special in technology. And then they are also there to assist the teachers and the students with integrating technology into the curriculum. The middle school is hiring a Point Six instructional technology coach. Dave Meyer kind of had that position in the past. We didn't hire his position back last year. So now we'll have a Point Six there. High school is actually going to a full-time. Last year, we had four people who were doing that position, but they were doing it for one release period a day. That meant that there were only four periods in a day that those teachers would be able to push into a classroom with having somebody who is now off for the full day that will give them the ability to push in the classrooms at any time during the day. So it will be a great benefit for our teachers. Those teachers will also be responsible for helping to do our professional development and training. So they will be a great resource for our department. And I'm really excited that we have them. Chromebooks for next year. For K-5, those students were going to have classroom sets. So those will be kept in the buildings. There may be occasion where they will be taking them home. So for example, a student didn't finish an assignment and needs to take one home. They would be able to do that. Now they will be assigned to a particular student. So, you know, this Chromebook will always go to Johnny and this will always go to Suzie. But they will be kept at school and they will be charged at school. For our, for our fifth graders, we may do a little, you know, later in the year, we may try to have them, you know, learn the responsibility of taking theirs home too. They will also be used if we have like an emergency remote day. So if there's a snow day and we, we kind of say, hey, there's a really good chance that tomorrow we're going to have a snow day, we would then have the ability to send those Chromebooks home with those students so that they would have them for the next day if we do a remote day. For 6 through 12, those students will be responsible for their own Chromebooks. So not only taking care of it, but bringing it to school and bringing it to school fully charged. For classroom setups, the teachers had the choice then. I told you about those setups that we worked on this past year. They have a choice of keeping those in their room or having them taken out, or just having pieces of them taken out. If they felt like the large monitor was too large, then they had the ability to have that taken out. So this year, we're really going to use this kind of an evaluation here so that we can look and see what's working for teachers, what's needed, and maybe what isn't needed. And on the network side, we are going to be doing a core switch upgrade this year. The core switches are currently end of life. We are replacing them with more modern switches that have redundancy built in. So for example, if we have a switch closet that has four switches in it, if the core switch goes out, all four of those switches go out. With the new technology, if one of them goes out, the other three will still stay up. Likewise, these switches will have redundant power supplies. So if one power supply goes down, the other power supply will keep that switch running. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Roxanne. Appreciate the update on that. I know last year, kind of through our, our technology timeline into disarray, I guess I'd appreciate at some point, maybe an update. I don't recall in our previous discussions where we talked about what the one-to-one plan was or what the vision was. or what the vision was at the elementary level. I remember the understanding of 6 through 12, but I don't understand how K through 5, what that investment is doing for us, how they're being utilized on a daily basis in this post-COVID world. So I guess I'd ask at some point, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but in the future, a presentation on whether we're going to continue to maintain enough devices in the elementary school for every K through 5 student to have it. If it's just for emergency snow days, is that a worthwhile investment? Is it going to be used on a day-to-day basis for curriculum delivery? I just, I'd like to know more information about that as we go forward.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you.
Before Roxanne sits down, she did a good job. Don't go too far. She did a good job giving credit to the rest of the tech staff and the teachers and students throughout the district. But the anxiety that Roxanne felt on a daily basis waiting for Chromebooks to come in was monumental. And on top of that, she really, she talked about SAPA, SOPA. But having to deal with the Chromebooks and keeping technology up and running, and then finding out that we had to have 170, 140 of these agreements, all done by July 1st? I never thought it would happen. And we're not quite there yet, but...
By school starting, it started July 1st, but as long as we're not using them until school starts, then get a little rested.
The mandate from the state is super frustrating. We want to make sure that students' identities are protected, but the SOPA program is a little bit burdensome, if you ask me. However, Roxanne never really questioned that. You know, this is what we have to do. We're going to get it taken care of, get it done. She's been on it since day one, done a great job. And in fact, as I've talked to other superintendents in the area about where they're at with SAPA, many of them are not quite to where we're at. So that's a credit to Roxanne and the work that she's done on top of everything else that she's managed this year. So in addition to the great work that everybody else has done, Roxanne, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
This time, it's my pleasure to welcome Chauncey Carrick to the podium, and he gets to talk about athletics and activities. And I'm a firm believer that academics is what we're here for first and foremost, but about activities and athletic programs is an additional opportunity for students. Sometimes that's what connects them to school and keeps them coming back. It also builds a lot of school spirit, and there are a lot of other benefits. So I'll get to drive for this one, too. I'm going to turn it over to Chauncey and pull up your PowerPoint.
Hello, everybody. We're, we, a lot to say that it was interesting here is, would be an understatement, but the, there's a few things I'm going to go over here later on that you will see the importance of why we need athletics and activities in our school. So I'm going to go through what we did this year, and how we did, and then we'll talk about how we're going to move forward as well. So right here, we have our state champion 4x8 team from about three weeks ago, four weeks ago now. And then on the left, that is every in-person practice, club meeting, anybody who attended a game before May 3rd, when the policy changed. That's everything that we've done during the year. Our coaches and advisors did a great job of doing a health sheet before every meeting or every practice. It's about 2,500, just under 2,500. And we kept very good records. And that turned out to be very helpful, and we'll talk about that a little bit more down the road as well. So our golf team, a few sports got to run on their normal time. Golf is one of them. They finished fourth. We did have five girls come out this year, and we did run a modified girls' schedule for them. They finished third in the conference. Sam Fallhaber was all-conference. And so was Brianna Schimon and Lauren Cohn. They finished in the girls' tournament. We had several academics. If there would have been a state tournament, Sam and Brianna would have qualified for state. Girls tennis finished third in the conference, and then a week later, had a great day and won the IHSA sectional. Emma Harden and Abby Borges were all-conference. And then we would have had five state qualifiers with Elizabeth Sharp, Emma and Abby, along with Abby Goldobieski and Olivia King. So girls cross-country finished second in the conference. They were third at their regional. Again, Lily Baker would have been a state qualifier if they would have had a state meet. Boys cross-country, they were second. They were fourth at the regional, and three all-conference athletes. And Jack Cambeer and Nick Coker, if there was a state meet, would have been individual state qualifiers. Girls swimming, these two young ladies were academic all-conference. We co-op swimming with DeKalb, and DeKalb is a member of the DDC, which is the Niqua, Matea Valley, Naperville's that school. So the competition level stepped up, and the girls did a great job. So we'll go on to the next. So now we move into our, when we went to the pause or whatever it was called in November and December, we weren't sure what was going to happen. And on January 23-ish, we were told, hey, you guys can start a week from today. So it was a, we scrambled like crazy. We got schedules together for all the sports at different times. And again, our coaches continued to do a great job during that pause to keep the kids, to keep in contact with the kids so that when we did get the word, we were able to go. The Interstate Eight, boys bowling was Interstate Eight Conference Champions, and three all-conference players. Bowling did not have a state series. As, so we go to dance. Dance was real interesting this year. They finished third in the conference and then were fourth at the sectionals. All the dance competitions and cheer competitions were done virtually. So through our program called Huddle, we were able to get a camera to install into the gym to help with some live-stream things. And our dance and cheer teams would go in there, do their routines, hit record, and that's what they would send to these competitions. So they ended up fourth in the sectional. They were 18, they qualified for the state meet, which was done virtually, and they finished 18th overall. Cheer was fifth in the conference. And Kaya and Ryan were their all-conference athletes. Gymnastics, they did have a regional. Again, it was a virtual competition. I'm not, Steve can attest to this. I'm not sure how you judge a virtual gymnastics competition, but I'm not real sure how you do that to begin with, anyway. So our girls have traditionally done very well and did well so again. Girls bowling, they were also Interstate Eight Conference Champions with Maddie and Maxine Lathrobes are all-conference athletes. Girls basketball, also Interstate Eight Conference Champions with Evan Carrier, Faith, Yurbock, Faith, Clem, and Ella Shipley as our all-conference. And again, basketball, the boys and girls basketball team did not get to have a state series. However, go to the next slide. With the boys and the girls, we did finish with the challenge for the first national challenge. We hosted it, and the boys and the girls won both those games. So it was a great way to end the season with two victories over DeKalb. So the boys finished fourth with Xavier, Yegna Bane as their all-conference. Boys swimming, again, they had a conference meet. I'm not sure how they did in the conference meet. But these four young men that were academic all-conference were also four of the mainstays on the boys swim team for DeKalb. So football, football in March was an interesting, I should have put on there the picture of when we had to get the three feet of snow off the football field and the soccer field. Those pictures are interesting as well. But again, we, our kids got to play a six-game season. They were Interstate Eight Conference Champions, and we had multiple athletes were all-conference and several were academical. Boys soccer were also Interstate Eight Conference Champions, and again, with several all-conference athletes. And again, these traditional fall sports that were moved to the spring, volleyball, soccer, and boy soccer, and football did not get a state series. Volleyball finished sixth in the conference. Had their ups and downs, but they have quite a few players coming back, so. So now we get to our traditional spring sports, with the exception of one. But girls track and field finished second in the conference. They had several all-conference athletes. They had a great season. They had two state qualifiers that got to participate in Charleston, Krista Clausen and Mackenzie Reiser, and they had a great season. Boys track, we touched on them a little bit ago. They finished second in the conference. They won the first sectional championship in school history this year. The 4x8 were state champions. Donnie Grammer, Carson Campbell, Nick Coker, and Kate Nummer. Tyler Carter finished fifth in the 110 and the 300-meter hurdles. If you want to find a good video, watch Tyler's 300 race. He's coming around, and the guy inside of him passes him, hits the hurdle wrong, and hits the ground. And on the video, you can literally see Tyler's eyes just get huge. It was, it was a great video to watch. And then our 4x1, they ran, they were not in the fast heat. They were in the second fastest heat, and they finished fifth coming from that previous heat, which is amazing for them to do. That's Jeff Ostrager, Noah Schmidt, Alec Garcia, and Bailey Wigman. Ollie Clark also qualified in the long jump and triple jump. Our 4x2 and our 4x4 also qualified for state. So again, they had a great, great season. Girls soccer finished second in the conference. They were a pretty tough regional, played a great game with Hampshire, and ended up losing in the second overtime. But again, a great season for girls soccer. Baseball finished second in the conference, won their first round regional game, and got beat by Burlington Central in the regional final. And again, a really young group, and pretty excited. They're pretty excited for the upcoming season. Softball, they just, they ended up winning the regional. They were fourth in the conference. What was amazing about this group is, you know, 2019, they were the state champs. Pandemic hits, their, Jill's, Jill's plan was, hey, I got four or five girls to kind of show these new girls the rope. Well, no season. Well, the new girls start the season 2 and 12. And they finished the season 15 and 14 overall with a regional championship. So again, started out slow, came on strong at the end, and had a great, great season. And then the weirdest thing for me as a former wrestling coach was wrestling in May is May and June. But it was, it was great for the kids to have a great season. They were Interstate Eight Conference Champions and did have several athletes that were all-conference. So again, we talked about our health screens. Before every in-person meeting, they would go through all the questions that we've been asked 1,000 times each. We would do a temperature check. You know, we had 468 in-person club meetings. And about almost 1,900 in-person practices or contests. That doesn't include Google Meet sessions or Zoom sessions that these teachers and coaches and advisors had with these students throughout the year as well. I would say that our participation this year was as great, if not better, than ever. That includes the high school and the middle school. Go to the next one. You know, they went above and beyond to ensure the safety during these in-person events. For athletics, we had two athletes test positive while, after participating in that event. So of all 1,800, only two practices had somebody there that was positive. And of those two practices, because our coaches did their due diligence, we only had to quarantine 17 athletes. And the two sports were big sports. So again, you got to commend our faculty and our staff, our coaches, our advisors, for doing the right things throughout the year to ensure the safety of these students. So moving forward, June 11th, in the morning, the all-sports guidance from the governor was 12 pages long. At 6:30 that evening, it was two pages long. And it summed up with this. They said, if you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask for any sport, whether you're indoors or out. They said, if you're not vaccinated, if you're outdoors, still don't need to wear a mask. Indoor sports, currently, they're saying you need to wear a mask. So that's what we're going by right now. So our fall sports, I hate it when you email stuff and it gets off the filter.
Yeah.
It bothers me a little bit.
Sorry about that.
All, that's all right. Probably my fault. The fall sports, our, all our fall sports are starting business as usual August 9th. Cross-country has their first week the 24th. They're going to travel to Plano. The first national challenge will be at DeKalb, or at Northern Illinois versus DeKalb, August 27th. You know, as we look down the list, we're, everything's going as normal. In the winter, again, everything's back the way it should be with our traditional events that start. And with that Thanksgiving weekend with our Strong Bob Tournament. And actually, we added sophomore addition to that in the morning now. So to ensure that our kids are getting quality games over here. Bold Boys Bowling will have their, start the season with their kickoff classic at Mardi Gras. And again, just looking, really looking forward to seeing everybody in the winter. And then our spring sports, again, track will start the end of January, and everybody else will start at the end of February moving forward. I want to thank you guys for all you've done this year. It hasn't been easy for any of us. I understand that. You guys have taken a lot. But I appreciate you allowing us to have our sports and our activities this year. The, on January 5th, I ran a grade report for our kids with Ds and Fs. It was 81 pages long. January 27th, I ran the same grade report. That's about four days after we found out, and that was down to about 70 pages. Two weeks after that, we were down to a 20-page report. So if you don't think that activities and athletics make those kids get in the classroom and do their work, you're wrong. Because we went from kids, a lot of kids with Ds and Fs to not very many kids with Ds and Fs in a very, very short period of time. So again, thank you for all you guys have done. Thank you for all you're going to continue to do. And if anybody has any questions, I would love to answer those. All right?
I got one question for you.
Yep.
All right. Cancel challenge, is it going to be, you know when it's going to be hosted?
First national challenge.
Yeah, first. Old habits.
First national of Omaha.
I was worried that they were going to change the FBO, but they are going to say the first national. We are going to play at Husky Stadium.
Okay.
And the basketball game will be at the Convocation Center. Everything is, like I said, business as usual.
Great, great job this year, Chauncey.
Yeah.
Very challenging.
It was fun. I'm going to leave with one, one quick story.
You've had so much fun that you...
You had so much fun that you want to do it again.
So, and with Mrs. Kierbach here, I don't want her to get offended, but I made the statement at the end of the basketball season, I was tired of basketball. And they're like, you don't like basketball? No, 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 no. We had to weigh our conference at basketball. The varsity played Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Freshmen played Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. The boys were home, the girls were on the road. So six days a week, we had basketball games here. I love basketball, but I was tired of nothing but basketball. Don't march seven, so again. But our kids did a great job, our coaches, advisors did a great job. And that's, that's what it was really all about. Thanks again.
Goes to Chauncey for all the work that he put into it. The coaches weren't as diligent as they were without somebody leading them and holding them accountable, but really leading them. And the focus was giving these kids opportunities. And as you can see, there was a point this past school year where we weren't sure what was going to happen. And you saw it all. We had seasons, great opportunities, and a lot of success too. So thank you, Chauncey. That brings us to, oops, sorry. Thanks, Nicole. I've got Ralph helping me, I've got Nicole helping me. It's a team effort tonight.
Takes a village.
Yes, it does. My wife says that about living with me all the time. So planning for the 21-22 school year. I did not call this return to learn or beyond return to learn. We are planning for a full return in the fall. We've talked about that for a long time. We've also been waiting for a long time for guidance that was finally released on Friday, July 9th. As has been kind of the norm with the pandemic and COVID, guidance was released with, without any warning all at once. There was an email in my inbox and started to get emails and phone calls. Long awaited. I'll talk a lot about the guidance tonight, but that's what we've been waiting for. I wish the timing was a little bit better and we had a little more time to digest the guidance. Kind of took over the weekend and the first couple of days of the week here, but it was well worth it. This is what we've been waiting for. Some key points from the revised CDC guidance. Schools should prioritize in-person, in-person learning first and foremost. So there are safety protocols that have to be put in place, but the focus is getting students back in school in person. Individuals who are fully vaccinated do not need to wear a mask in any setting. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask indoors and when social distancing can't be maintained. Three feet of social distancing should be maintained wherever possible, but it is not required. And that was a stumbling block, the word previously made it restrictive. That's given us a little bit of flexibility. I'll talk about that tonight. Local data, the health metrics that we've talked about, vaccination levels and rate of community transmission should guide the degree to which mitigation measures such as face masks, regular hand washing, testing, and proper ventilation are used. This was a big part of the guidance. This gives local communities the opportunity to make these decisions based on local, local data. Again, the new guidance emphasizes the importance of in-person learning, regardless of whether or not mitigations can be implemented strictly. And then I pulled a quote from the CDC guidance that was released on Friday. I want to highlight the last line there. If you can't social or physically distance, that should not exclude students from in-person learning. Keep a minimum distance requirement. So again, whatever it takes to get students back in school, that's the focus. IDPH immediately adopted the CDC guidance. ISB immediately aligned with, with IDPH. There was a little blip there where ISB interpreted the guidance a little bit differently, but then immediately issued a clarification and, and accepted the CDC guidance. IDPH school update was scheduled for this morning, 10 o'clock. I was looking forward to it. What does all this guidance mean? I've got a board meeting tonight. I need to know what this guidance mean, means. It was, it was postponed and rescheduled for next Tuesday. Made things a little bit more challenging, but still feel like we're at a point where I can make some modifications tonight. I was able to speak with representatives from the DeKalb County Health Department today regarding the new guidance. Had a great conversation with the Health Department. Also a lot of conversation internally with staff, Corey Mock, who was involved in that, our district nurse, as well as some other folks in our own district. So before I get into my recommendations, just want to touch a little bit on the data because this is what guides the recommendation. This is the 30-day trend in test positivity in Region One. This is not just DeKalb County, although DeKalb County mirrors this pretty well. This is Region One. So you can see the dotted line is the 8% threshold. You can see where 5% is. And you can see that we have been pretty stable since the beginning of June, well below even the 5% threshold. All the purple dots indicate where there was an increase. But even with those increases, the trend is, is pretty flat and pretty stable. Some of this came off the website today. Some of this came in conversation with the Health Department. I thought that this was really, really good information. So first of all, state, regional, county, and local data have been both low and stable. In terms of our county, the seven-day rolling test positivity, it's been under 8% since January 29th. Which put it in that, which puts it in that moderate range. 8%, is the break between moderate and significant, or moderate and substantial, excuse me. It's been under 5% since May 27th, which, which puts it in that minimal range. With a couple of blips in the radar, some time in April and some time in March, we've actually been below 5% going back all the way to beginning of February. I think it's February 2nd or February 9th. So again, the data has been pretty low and pretty stable. The number of new cases per 100,000 residents, it's been under 100 since May 15th. That's in the moderate range. So I picked these numbers on purpose. 100 is the break between moderate and substantial. 50 is the break between minimal and moderate. We've been under 100 cases, new cases per 100,000 residents since May 15th in DeKalb County. We've been under 50 since June 5th. So a little over a month now. 40% of all residents in DeKalb County are vaccinated. All meaning eligible and ineligible. So that number that's been reported, I've kept an eye on that, maybe you have too. That number includes, is based on all of the residents in DeKalb County. So it still includes students who are, told they're new or under 12. This is, this is a conversation with the DeKalb County Health Department today. When you just consider the percentage of residents who are eligible for the vaccine, that number is 61%. So it's a lot better than I thought. That number should go up at some point. There will be a vaccine approved for, for younger students. Even when it goes down to, to young students, the guess is that, that might boost those numbers, anywhere between 5 and 10%. The goal is to get to 75%. So the Health Department's goal is to get to 75%, which would, which would give us herd immunity. Part of me wants to start a pool on whether or not that's going to happen or not, but we'll see. Health Department is seeing up to 60 residents a day for vaccinations. They're doing walk-ins, so they're not scheduling these big clinics anymore, places like the Convocation Center. They are still going out a little bit, but really they walk, they run a walk-in clinic every day. It's not uncommon for them to have 60 residents come in and get vaccinated. I believe they give Johnson and Johnson vaccination every day. And then they alternate the Pfizer and the Moderna. So if you're interested in getting vaccinated and you're not vaccinated yet, call the Health Department and they'll, they'll let you know when you can come in. Based on the recent guidance, which prioritizes current local data that I just talked about, I'm making the following recommendations tonight. We continue to implement the following mitigation strategies. Three feet of social distancing as much as possible. Regular hand washing, proper ventilation, proper cleaning and disinfection. That will change a little bit the cleaning and disinfection recommendations last year. When those were issued, there was still a belief that the COVID coronavirus survived on surfaces for longer periods of time. Research has, has told us that that's not the case. The virus really doesn't survive on surfaces for as long as we think. So the cleaning and disinfection will continue to do that. It will look much more normal, you know, when you, when you look at what was last year compared to previous years. It's going to look different from last year. It's going to look much more normal to what we see in, in years past. We will continue to have unique isolation spaces for any individual, students or staff who present COVID symptoms. We'll continue to contact trace. We'll also continue to, to do rapid COVID testing conducted by our health staff. So we've conducted rapid binex testing since late winter, early spring. Really a game changer for us in terms of being able to identify who was COVID, COVID positive and who wasn't. So we initially started out with our staff. We did open that up to students later in the school year. But within 10 to 15 minutes, you can go do a nasal swab. It's not the uncomfortable nasal swab. It's a nasal swab. They, they gather that. We were doing that at the district office initially. So people could drive up, you didn't have to get out of your car with a quick swab. You could go park, wait for 15 minutes, and then get results. Instead of having to send people home, go to the doctor, get a COVID test, get that documented and come back. It really sped things up quite a bit. We'll continue to, to do that. One of the other, one of the other things we're working on is an outbreak testing protocol. So the Health Department identifies an outbreak as five or more connected cases. That could happen in classrooms, it could happen on the bus, it can happen in a variety of settings. But if there are five connected cases, then we would implement outbreak testing, which would, which would be a little bit more aggressive in trying to identify any other COVID positive individuals that are, that are in our school. So Corey Mock is working on that. That may require that we look at the SHIELD testing program, which is run by the University of Illinois. They do that testing, they come onsite with their staff, they do all of the reporting. You can do that on a regular basis and do random testing. We're not really interested in that at this point because we've got the rapid testing onsite already. But they will also come in and do testing for outbreaks. If you've got five or more connected cases, we are considering having them come onsite and do a rush of tests all at once, just to try to isolate a potential outbreak. We're developing that testing protocol. It's not ready tonight, but I expect to have that ready to present to the board in August. The big question over the last four days has been face masks. What are schools doing with face masks? We're implementing a lot of other mitigation strategies, but the face masks are the big question. My recommendation to the board, based on the new guidance, is that individuals who are fully vaccinated, that means they, they have had both vaccine doses and, and 14 days post that, should not be required to wear a face mask at all. Individuals who are not fully vaccinated should wear a face mask indoors and in crowded settings, but I'm recommending that that's not required. So a lot of talk about should, must, have to. Insert a lot of different words in that space and a lot of conversations, both internally and with the Health Department. And, and although I, I will tell you, not everybody is 100% comfortable with, with my recommendation, everybody, everybody that I spoke to feels like our plan is, is reasonable. Based on my recommendation tonight. So my recommendation is that individuals who are not fully vaccinated should wear a face mask indoors and in crowded settings, but it's not required. Also pulled this quote from the CDC school guidance. Consistent with correct face mask, mask used by people who are not fully vaccinated is especially important indoors and in crowded settings, and physical distancing cannot be maintained. CDC stressed that, the, the DeKalb County Health Department stressed that. If you're not fully vaccinated, other than being vaccinated, face masks are one really important step that you can take. But that's something that would be up to families to choose. All individuals on a school bus will be required to wear a face mask in accordance with CDC requirements. So if you looked at that CDC guidance and you kind of scrolled to the bottom, it was, it was kind of hidden in there. They were very clear in black and white. Everybody on a school bus wears a mask. Adult, the driver, the monitor, students, whatever the case may be. Everybody has to wear a mask still. So I'm recommending that we continue to do that. All safety requirements regarding activities will follow IDPH all-sports policy, which Chauncey talked about just a couple of minutes ago. My wife and I have two kids who will be in Sycamore schools, one of which is under 12, let's just put it that way. So the recommendation that I made tonight did not come lightly. One of my concerns is that when we leave this optional for students, now we're going to have a situation where some students are going to come to school wearing a mask by choice and some students will not. It's very important to me that we treat everybody equally. And one of the, one of the folks that talked earlier tonight referenced that. I think that's really important. So our staff and students are called to accept and support one another all of the time. Not just as we move forward. Whether or not they wear a face mask. So I stole the hashtag from the middle school, I don't know if there's any middle school folks here tonight, but I stole the hashtag from them. Together we Spartan, we're in this together. So if students show up with face masks on, what I'll do is, or staff members, if they do that, they choose to do that. What I would ask is that everybody in our community, everybody in our school district recognizes that that's a personal choice. And if that's what they choose to do, that's awesome. That's great for them and we're going to continue to support them. If they don't, we recognize that as well, based on my recommendations. We will still quarantine. Quarantine guidance has not changed. So fully vaccinated individuals should not be required to quarantine. The quarantine guidance has not changed. There was a little bit of flexibility in the quarantine guidance. We chose not to pursue that back in the, at the end of the last school year because we were still learning a lot about the virus and, and for a variety of other reasons. We are recommending that quarantines be moved to 10 days as opposed to 14 for any individual who tests positive or who is in close contact. The definition of a close contact has not changed at this point. So it's still six feet, anybody who is within six feet of a positive case, COVID positive individual, prepare it 15 minutes within a 24-hour period. So it might be two minutes, they walk away, they come back, it's five more minutes. It's an accumulation of 15 minutes in a 24-hour period. We do know that that's getting a lot of talk at the state level. So this, this call next week, or even by the end of this week, we may see that, that that may change. I don't think that distance is going to get longer. I think it's going to get shorter. But until that comes in, we'll follow the quarantine guidance as it is, in terms of close contact. Staff members may return after seven days if they present a negative PCR test, test result that is collected on either day five, six, or seven of their quarantine. That's supported by IDPH and, and local Health Department guidance. If we choose to move forward with my recommendations, it is critical that everybody knows that this could turn on a dime. So we have a responsibility to react swiftly to, to increases in test positivity. The number of cases per 100,000 residents and other local health data to protect our students and staff. We will need to be prepared to shift if needed. And I want to make it clear to the board, as well as to everybody here tonight, as well as to the community. If the numbers start to rise and we see cases increase in our schools, I will protect our students first and our staff first. And we, we will consider implementing some more restrictive guidelines. Could be temporary, could be longer term. And I cannot tell you what that threshold number is. One of the things we learned last year is that there are a variety of factors that come into play when we're making these decisions. If we start with these recommendations, the last thing I want to do is change those if we have to. I want consistency, want consistency for the school year coming up. But we, everybody needs to know that the, that the ground and the rug gets pulled up from underneath of us, we've got a responsibility to react and protect our students and our staff. I will involve everybody needed to do that, especially the Health Department, as well as our, our staff internally. But I'm hoping that we don't need to do that. Our numbers have stayed, part of the reason I'm making this recommendation tonight is that our numbers have been low and they've been very stable. Who knows what, what happens when the school year starts? You know, numbers have been stable partly because it's been the summertime. We just don't know. But I'm comfortable making the recommendations that I've made based on conversations with folks because the data supports them. I'm almost ready for questions, but not yet. The last thing I would, I would ask everybody, our staff, students, their families, and the community to consider are what we can do to contribute to our collective success. So I would ask that everybody monitor themselves, their children, and those around them. Do that diligently to stay safe and healthy. Report any COVID symptoms presented by anyone in your home to your child's school. If it's not COVID, that's great, we can cross it off the list. But if it, if it turns out to be a situation where there's a potential positive, we can get those, we can get those students in, get them rapidly tested and figure that out for sure. Remember that individuals react differently to all illnesses, COVID included. Most people I know who have had COVID have dealt with it reasonably well. Maybe a couple of days, maybe a couple of weeks. Like everybody, almost everybody else that I know, I, I have friends. Like everybody, almost everybody else that I know, I have friends and family who passed away due to COVID. So those might be isolated, but we just need to remember that everybody reacts differently to every illness, COVID included. While you or someone in your home may not have any symptoms, a child in your student's class may be significantly impacted. So we need to continue to keep that in mind as we move forward. Last but not least, I would ask that we continue to support each other. We are in this together. Although the circumstances have improved, it's part of the conversation I had with the Health Department this morning. The local data is, is good, it's much better. We're still not quite out of the pandemic yet. So we need to continue to be cautious. I think it's, you know, several of the comments tonight had to, had to do with living life kind of normally. And I think that's been great. My family has been part of that as well. But we've not been in a congregate setting like school since, since June. So we just need to keep that in mind. The pandemic is not over, it's not, you need to be cautious. Let's not open the floodgates quite yet, but, but we can let the water flow a little bit, a little bit more. That's the end of, of my comments. I would be glad to answer any questions.
I don't so much have a comment, just that I would echo my support, your, your recommendation. I think that those are very prudent steps. I would want to emphasize two parts, the one, the "Together We Spartan" hashtag. I think it would be completely unacceptable and go against the core values that we discussed at the opening of every board meeting, if we tolerated any sort of discrimination, bullying, teasing whatsoever regarding students who have made the choice to mask or, or teachers for that matter. So I would hope that that would be, that we would have good policy in place as to how we're going to correct that behavior. I would also echo my support of providing for the option that things could change. I think if there's anything we have to respect in the world of science and in just what we've experienced in the last year, it's that you have to, you have to respect what you don't know. And we don't know where this is going. We don't know what the echo variant or the tango variant of this virus could work into. And while I agree with all the parents that are here and then the community that by and large our, our children are pretty safe, malaria also doesn't kill the mosquito that carries it. So we don't want to be part of the communal problem, the societal problem that is continuing to spread this disease if any measures we can take at school are going to help society. So love where we're going, but, but do respect that you'll keep us informed of the data and recommendations as they may change in the future. But thank you for, for this recommendation.
Thank you for that last statement, because I think that's imperative that we all realize. Coming from an education background, I know what goes on in schools. I know what teachers deal with. I know how kids are loved every minute of it. But I think we need to realize that things can change very quickly. And I am honestly praying that things go well. I am really, really scared. So I'm just hoping, you know, that things can work out for us and everybody, everybody gets back to where we need to be. But I think we have to remember how quickly things can change. Because that's how schools are. And any educator in this room will agree with that statement. So thank you for that last statement, that we have to be ready to shift if necessary. It's not going to be a big surprise. Everybody needs to know that that can happen. I'm betting it doesn't.
I think it's a very reasonable plan. I, I'm very pleased that the pendulum is starting to swing back to local control again, so that we have some say in what direction we can take. And I agree with my colleagues that, you know, we have to be, the word we continually use is nimble. We have to be able to react if there is a need to change things. And it might be, might be positively, it might be negatively, depending on your, your stance. But, you know, it's, it's just, we don't know what the future holds and we're going to have to keep that open. But for the time being, given the information we have now, given the circumstances, I think, I think your proposal is very reasonable. I commend you for putting that together and presenting it. Thank you.
First off, although I don't understand the issue with people that don't want to say they've been vaccinated because we've all been vaccinated for a half dozen things to attend school in our lifetime, what the difference is with this vaccine, quite frankly. Here's mine, I'm vaccinated. That notwithstanding, I've been rolling this around in my head before the guidelines even came out. Talked with other colleagues on some other boards and we've obviously, as our own business, are, have been debating what we do with things as well. So again, reasonable, what I landed on, which is essentially what you have said, is the best thing we could do at this point is follow the CDC's guidance, word for word. Not make up our own version of it, not take a state's version, not take somebody else's version, just follow their version exactly the way it says it. And it's basically what you've said. So I have no issue, I support that.
I'll just add one comment too. I know that, you know, and I think this is great, I'm really happy to see this, you propose. I know a big concern that I've had, at least over the summer and then in talking with my brother and some of his friends in school and school age, is just the social, emotional wellbeing of what the kids have gone through and the students have gone through over the last year and the anxiety that they're dealing with, especially approaching this year. I think this is a huge stride towards hopefully battling that sub pandemic that is, you know, that is definitely plaguing, I think, teens and, and pre-teens throughout the nation. So I, I really hope that, that we can ramp up as a district to social, emotional education and support services to make sure that, that as we kind of come out of this, we don't see, we try to hedge or fend off what might be any lasting repercussions pandemic has had on them.
I think that's a really good point. And one of the things this, this does is to continue to get students back in school where we can get, and eyes on them is the best way to put it. And one of the challenges with the remote learning and even the hybrid is that we didn't see kids, students on a regular basis. We were able to do that better at the end of the school year. We'll be able to do that even better now as we move into the coming school year. But I think you raised a really important point and something that was part of my thought process was that there's a whole other, there are all sorts of sides that we need to look at, but that's a huge one, that social, emotional illness piece. So we will do that in the coming school year.
I really don't have too much to add. I mean, I agree with what everybody else is saying. Parents make decisions for their students, their children, you know, come to school. We'll support everyone, whether they choose to wear a mask, don't wear, choose to wear a mask. But one question I do have is in regards to the quarantines. Do you anticipate, not that you know, but for sure, but any type of change to that guidance as we get closer to the school year, where that may change? I know, I guess in my mind, I was thinking maybe they tweak that or, you know, give a golden key out of that somehow by getting the test, doing X, Y, and Z. Because inevitably, we can sit here and clap all we want as we sit here in July and everything's great, why don't we wear a mask, everything's great, everything's fantastic, until it's, you know, the day before homecoming and now I get a call that my child is quarantined. Or the day before the football game, softball game, whatever. That's going to happen to multiple families throughout the year. And the school district's going to be questioned and there's going to be six different questions back and forth. That seems to be probably the next hurdle to get by. Do you think that that changes that any?
You know, I think that the definition of close contact is, is one of the areas that I, I know that they're looking at. I don't want to speculate, but I'm, you know, based on conversations I've had, I think it's reasonable to believe that there will be, you know, a kind of a shortening of that distance. The challenge with the, the length of the quarantine is the incubation period of the virus. You know, it's not 12 hours or 24 hours, it's five, seven, 10 days. So to the best of my knowledge, you know, health staff can probably speak to this better, but to the best of my knowledge, the length of quarantine is really based on the precaution of making sure that any individual who's positive has kind of let the virus run its course. As time goes on, if, if we feel like we can get a better handle on that, you know, I can envision the quarantine going down, you know, the seven days for staff, you know, for, for adults. At some point, I, I think we're going to consider making that change for students also. Again, with the same kind of caveat, that you've got to have a negative PCR test. The rapid testing that we do is not rapid, it's not a PCR test. So that's something that, that individuals will, at least not at this point. Individuals will have to go to a doctor or offsite somewhere to get that done. I could, I could envision a scenario where the, the length of quarantine per student goes down from 10 to, to seven under those circumstances. I could also see that happening kind of in, in age breaks, kind of like the vaccination approvals have been done. So maybe it comes down to 16 and then 12 or something like that. So we'll keep an eye on that, you know, the, as long as we can keep students safe and shorten that quarantine, that means they're in school longer. Or faster. So I would love to see that change, but I know that there's also this balance between the safety of students who are COVID positive or potential close contact. But also when you come back, you know, you want to make sure the other students and staff are protected when students come back. So we'll keep an eye on that, but at this point, I think those are, we'll just have to wait and see.
And I know that even this past school year, being able to reduce six feet to three feet has been great. And then giving now the flexibility of that one activity that puts them within three feet, we can still get by on that. But is the, without jumping through too many hoops, are we trying to keep them? If, if, if given the opportunity, we're trying to keep them six feet, is that just because of that? I mean, we have a situation where, because again, it's going to happen. Like people, we're, you know, students are going to miss things during the school time because of that. So if we can avoid it, let's avoid it.
Really good question.
But not to the detriment of keeping them out of school, obviously.
So we're going to do our best to keep students within three feet.
Sure.
Based on the current guidance, because that's what it's going to take to get 100% of our students back every day. And there will be situations where students are not three feet. They may be two feet apart, they may be a foot and a half apart, they may be a foot apart. But that goes back to the new guidance that indicates that three feet should not exclude students from school. That was a huge issue for superintendents across the state this, this summer so far is that there are a lot of schools out there that cannot maintain three feet and bring 100% of the students back home. So again, we're not going to open the floodgates. We're going to still, you know, configure classrooms and spaces within schools to, to keep three feet as much as we can. But everybody needs to know, it's not going to be three feet all of the time. So we'll continue to do our best and as things relax, we'll, we'll follow suit as well.
That's great.
One more thing. How are we handling lunches?
We're going to do our best to keep students separate at lunch. I would imagine, and so this guidance is brand new. I haven't had a chance to talk to the admin team about it and what lunch is going to look like. I really don't know that lunch is going to deviate a ton, but we're going to have to make some changes in order to, you know, especially like the middle school and high school. We're using spaces, classes are going to need to be held. So we're going to have to make some changes. The guidance allows us to do that. The guidance doesn't specify lunches different from classrooms or hallways or anything else. So we'll still try to keep them three feet at a minimum. And there may be times when they're closer than that, but we're going to try to keep them spaced out as much as we can. That question, I can give you a definitive answer and I, just because I haven't had a chance to have those conversations with the admin team.
We're going to try and do that without taking away teaching stations?
We're going to try to give as much, as many teaching stations back as, as humanly possible. And the, the new guidance allows us to be a lot more flexible than we were before. Yeah, that is the superintendent's report.
All right, then we'll move on to open discussion and future agenda items.
To jump off of Michael's comment earlier, it's something that I know I brought up, I think probably everybody here, back when this all started, we were on virtual meetings, I think before you even were officially in capacity or just participating, that we knew there was already a social, emotional issue that we were dealing with and it was only going to be exacerbated by, by a pandemic. So for me, I think especially this first year back, when we're truly back, hopefully, maybe a quarterly update on where we are and what we're seeing trend-wise with social, emotional issues at each of the, you know, K-5, middle school, high school levels would, would be helpful to me to understand where, where we're at. How much have we spiked up or have we plateaued or are we going back down, wherever it might be? And I think maybe, we don't need it every meeting, but I think maybe on a quarterly kind of basis, it would be good to have an update for the board on where we stand socially, emotionally with the students.
Other issues or observations or questions? I suppose it should be noted for the record that we have a happy birthday to celebrate.
Yes, and there's cookies, people do not leave.
Happy birthday, Julie. Other open discussion issues, observations, questions? Future agenda items? Is there a motion then to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations and imminent litigation?
Second.
Who can second it, roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Devo?
Yes.
Shadwick?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we will, we'll move to executive session and then we will. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second. Who can second it, roll call?
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Baby?
Yes.
Devo?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Shadwick?
Yes.
Devo?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are.